Good evening, I'd like to call the Columbia Heights Public School District, Independent School District 13 Board Meeting of Tuesday, May 12th, 2015, to order at, we'll go 7:02. If you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome. Lori, if you would, roll call, please.
Sure. Landwehr.
Here.
Larkin.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Thanks. Our core values, community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Next up is the Agenda Approval Adjustments, Announcements, and Correspondence. Would be, first thing would be the approval of the agenda. Could I have a motion for that, please?
I'll move that forward.
Laura, thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Grant. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Announcements, May 19th, Tuesday at 5:30 PM, School Board Listening Session in the Family Center. May 19th, Tuesday at 6:00 PM, the School Board Work Session, Community Room. May 25th, Monday, no school, Memorial Day, the district is closed. May 26th, Tuesday at 6:30 PM, the Employee of the Year Reception in the Family Center foyer. May 26th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, the regular School Board Meeting here in the Community Room. June 4th is Thursday, the last day of school for students. June 4th, Thursday at 7:00 PM is the high school graduation. And June 9th, Tuesday, the 7:00 PM is the regular School Board Meeting here in the Community Room. And is there any correspondence?
Mr. Chair members, there's no correspondence at this time.
Okay, thank you. For communication to the Board, citizens and employee representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the School Board. The Board will listen to brief, to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow-up. The Board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. It looks like we've got someone that would like to chat. Come on up. I will move forward to the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the April 14th and 28th School Board Meetings, Personnel Report, and the Treasures Report for March of 2015. And if I could, get a motion to move that forward.
I'll move that forward.
Is that Molly?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
I'm gonna give it to Laura. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just have one small correction on the Board Topics for April 14th. I believe it should say, I've, I have talked with other Boards about Myers-Briggs types of personality assessments, not the full Myers-Briggs personality assessment, which is quite lengthy, so.
Types of?
Yeah, types.
And, uh, under the Board Topics from the, it says, Mr. Landwehr talked about Myers-Briggs and how it was used. He said, "types of Myers-Briggs."
Assessments.
Anything else? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion Reports and Information Items, reports from members of the Board. Board Members will report out on activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. And Molly, do you mind starting?
Sure. I was able to go to the annual awards dinner for the Booster Club in Columbia Heights. I was also over at the Highland Ice Cream and Books Evening, and the Career Celebration Dinner. The, I also had a meeting with Superintendent Kelly and a couple of the Directors. In addition, I was able to go cheer on a couple of the varsity track meets.
Go right around. Lori?
I attended the last AMSD Meeting. I think the updates and information from there was in our five, May 1st update packets, so there's details were in there. As far as I know, the Omnibus K-12 Education Bill is still in committee, and I don't think there's any updates that I'm aware of, so anyway, that's still in committee being worked out. Other than that, I also attended the Career Celebration, and it was a really, really nice night. We wish, you know, all of the people leaving us well in their next chapters of their life and wherever, whatever their pursuits take them, but it was a really nice night. And that concludes, oops, concludes my report. Thank you.
Ted?
I also attended the Booster Dinner, and what strikes me every year is just the community feeling, the community pulling together at the Booster Dinner. So, it's a fabulous event, and we've got a great way to celebrate our, our, our community and the way they support kids. Also visited the Capitol, talked to Representative Lane, and communicated with Senator Goodwin about some educational issues. Attended the play, The Addams Family, and there's absolutely nothing normal about that family, but, but it was normally a spectacular play, like it usually is, so. Attended the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, and the Teachers Retirement Dinner. Had the opportunity to attend the Family Center Picnic here in this, this facility, and just amazed by the number of people that attended. So, a lot of support for the Family Center and ECFE programs, which is great. I met with Superintendent Kelly, Director Bennett, and Director Holmgren to discuss the rationale behind the staffing changes we're considering this evening, and attended the Chair Meeting prior to this meeting, and then also the WMAP Executive Committee Meeting. WMAP is interviewing for the, the Executive Director position now on May 20th, and Superintendent Kelly is part of that interviewing committee. And also, the Joint Powers Board is planning on considering who they recommend on May 29th. WMAP is going to consider giving $2 million for the deferred maintenance budget that's been accumulated in WMAP's funds, now that they don't have, they won't have schools starting in, in July. Forty percent of that is considered to be going to Minneapolis, and 60% to Robbinsdale, and that's based on the estimated deferred maintenance in both, you know, in, in the facilities. And the new facility that WMAP is considering is gonna be in Golden Valley, which is supposedly centrally located among all, all the member districts. That's my report.
Grant?
I attended The Addams Family Musical, and I agree with Ted, it was anything but normal, but it was wonderful. I mean, it was probably one of the funniest musicals I've ever seen, our drama department put on, and I gotta commend Jill Jungers, she did an awesome, awesome work on that, and, and the kids too, they were wonderful. Went to the Career Celebration Dinner. That was a moving experience, seeing, you don't expect to see people that you, when you went to school, retire, but you did, and it was a little teary-eyed at the end. So, I mean, a few people were poking fun, but, you know, that's heights for you, so I totally appreciate that. Went to the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, went to Valley View's first grade showcase, also the fourth and fifth grade showcase on the same day. Also attended the Valley View PTO on that same day, which a wonderful PTO we have. And I had a meeting with Kathy Kelly on the staffing and what's going on with the changes, and I know that changes are scary, but, you know, I think trust is a big deal, and I have total trust in the administration on what they're doing, so, appreciate that. So, that's about it.
Laura?
Well, let me see, I was trying to rack my brain to figure out, I spent a couple of busy weeks here. I attended the Business Council Meeting, Chamber of Commerce, that was pretty interesting. It was all about building codes and getting permits, so that was a lot of fun, but I learned a lot. And then, the next thing I attended was the, the monthly meeting for Metro 916, that's the Special Education District that we're in collaboration with several other school districts. And just to, and, and for anybody who doesn't know, they provide a lot of our edu, our special education for more extraordinary needs. We do have some programs in our district itself, but there are some services that we, we collaborate with other districts. That was a very, fairly short meeting, we just got the final report for the project, for the, the plan for what to do with the Capital View Building, which is kind of the centerpiece of that particular district, with a lot of programs running out of there, as well as their, their technology hub is also located at that, at that particular location. Then I attended the Mayor's Breakfast, which was, which was very nice, of course, I got there too late, again, for actual breakfast, but I enjoyed some wonderful company, and it was, it's always a good time. And then the Career Celebration at the end of, at that, that same day, and that's always fun. It was nice to see not too many people retiring this year, so, but I have a feeling that a couple of them, Kathy, will be able to entice back, so, but I'm keeping my fingers crossed on that. I think that's pretty much it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Good, thanks. I also attended the Boosters Dinner. The Teacher Celebration was, as always, is just, it, it's fun to watch. Unfortunately, none of the teachers that were retiring, I wasn't in school when they were there, so I didn't have that same connection, they were teaching my kids, but several different baseball games, it's been a reasonably good year weather-wise to be out to watch the games, we haven't always had that. I had the opportunity to go watch the synchronized swimming, their, the teams show the best show on H2O, and it was actually, it was a really fun night and exciting to watch. The Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, I also attended. I thought the theme of that, that everyone has a story from our speaker, he did a really nice job, and I will concur with everyone regarding the play, it was, it was phenomenal, and it was probably nothing normal about it, so, they, they did a really nice job, so, and I believe that's it for me, so. Superintendent Kelly?
Mr. Chair and members, we celebrated Administrative Professional Day with the Clerical Unit, and they're a great group of employees with tremendous support to staff, students, and the communities, I just wanted to again, once again, thank them again tonight. I'm happy to announce that Ms. Christine Werkamp will be completing some of her superintendent licensure hours with me, it's not unusual for internships and mentor-mentee relationships to go through at the superintendents' level, she's actually studying directly with Dr. Michael Lovett in White Bear Lake, but she is also going to spend 40 hours with me, so you may see her at some of our School Board Meetings. She's the, presently the Director of Community Education with White Bear Lake Area Schools. I attended with the AMSD Board of Directors Meeting that Lori Meyer just talked about, and there was things in the update, and I have to just concur with her that May 18th will tell the tale. So, attended the Columbia Heights Athletic Booster Dinner, and that was great, and thanks to the boosters for making it always happen, and I thought that Principal Robuleski was the featured speaker, and I wanted to thank him for putting together this speech and representing our school district. I also wanted to congratulate Mr. Rockwell and Mr. Horella for receiving awards, because they do so much for our schools, and, and part of it was community service, and they certainly give their life's blood to this organization. The Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, always, I think, is reflective, and always is a great start to the day, and everyone has a story, and I've been thinking about people's stories since then, so thanks to the mayor for inviting all of us and making it possible. The Career Celebration, again, was pulled off, and I just want to thank, again, everybody who planned it, 'cause it takes a village to have all of that happen. The North Suburban Superintendents have once again met, and were talking about further investigating a collabora, a collaboration around college and career readiness. We've been doing this for a while, and we're to the stage where we'd like to talk a little bit more about it in our next School Board Work Study Session, and then with your permission and additional conversation, I think we'll go more in-depth with that, but I just, I wanted to let you know that's coming up. I also want to say congratulations on another successful musical at the high school. The Addams Family is a very tough play to do, the principals really have a lot of lines to learn, and I thought they pulled it off really, really well. Ms. Hoyum and I attended, as well as other Board Members, and all I can say is, dah 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 dah. Okay? Our Agribis, Agribusiness Committee has met officially to begin discussing future plans on program, on program initiations and expansions, and you'll be hearing more, more about that in the very near future. I've met, or I've chatted with, I think, most or all of the School Board Members over the last two weeks, I want to thank all of you for your time on that, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on to Strategic Direction C. The Board will be prevent, presented with information on the Strategic Direction C, knowing, knowing, honoring who we are to build strong relationships, and our presenters are Nicole Hallaby and Willie Fort. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Larkin, Members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly. We are pleased to be here this evening, and I'm just trying to get the layout right. Can you get it to the slideshow?
Wrong position.
Sorry about that. I've got my glasses on, thank you, Director Burkes. We're here to present Strategic Plan C, and that is, knowing who we are. Columbia Heights, we always create a world of opportunities for every learner in partnership with supportive, small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. The core values that we feel are really important in knowing who we are and honoring our relationships, our community, it's all about the relationships that are developed with the community and the school together. Excellence, because Columbia Heights is an excellent public school, and Columbia Heights, Hilltop, and Southern Fridley are excellent communities. Collaboration with the community, and innovation. So, these are the vision, what we intend to create, and there is the knowing and honoring who we are to build strong relationships, and that's what guides Strategic Direction C. So, this is the card, the Strategic Direction C Card, and we're gonna talk about increasing enrollment in pre-AP and AP classes for students of color commensurate with their white peers. This year, we are at Level 4, which means we're progressing. There is a 10 to 20% gap between other student groups and white students. I spoke to Coordinator Frauley, and she said that that's actually quite impressive, that many districts, the gap is much more significant. Of course, we want to get to Level 5, which is the vision, always striving to move forward. Enrich curriculum with a variety of cultural perspectives, 20 to 39% of our courses contain enriched curriculum, and that is something that, with Teaching and Learning, we're working on. I'm proud to say that one of the reviews that we're doing, and we've already started purchasing curriculum, I see it upstairs in Teaching and Learning, is for American Indians, and that is something that the families in the community brought forward to us, something that they wanted to see some more fiction and nonfiction and in our curriculum, and so I'm hoping that alone will help move the needle closer to three, or maybe even four. Family Involvement Programs such as REACH, so when it's, we're at Level 2, that's 40 to 49% of the targeted families are participating, so of the families we invite, about half attend, and it is a big-time commitment. We're looking forward to doing some more marketing and really focusing on doing some more parent engagement things this year and next year to get the families we invite out. Do you want to talk about the Equity Teams? Principal Fort?
Let's see, well, we have strong Equity Teams in, in each of our buildings, doing a really, really good work. I think we're, I think it's making a difference, it's a, it's a, it's a key when you have 70% of your children in the district are children of color, actually 71%, that we have not only diversity in our curriculum, but also a understanding of our different cultures, and, and all our kids are treated fairly and, and equally. So, a very positive, positive group of people in each, in each building, and they're making a difference, and, and they enjoy their work, and so, looking forward to continuation of that.
And the next one also is that vision, which we're really proud of, and that's the Cultural Family Events, and do you want to talk about anything that's going on at Valley View? Or the Academy?
Well, the one thing that we are gonna do, I think North Park was very successful last year, we had, we had different nights for EL, and we have an Afri, we had an African Heritage Night, and we had an XL Night. We're gonna combine all of those nights into one big activity, and, and in the fall, can't remember the date offhand, I think we're talking October, maybe early November, but we just decided that people, doing it that way will give people choices as to what events they attend, or want to attend. That's the Valley View Plan, North Park did that last year. One thing that we did is we moved our, our picnic to the fall. We used to do picnic in the fall and carnival, we had both of our really large activities in the springtime, and now we're kind of separating that out, so we have an opportunity to kind of meet the, the parents and hopefully do some bonding early on. Every spring, we'd get to a point where we'd say, "Oh, that's so-and-so's uncle," or, or what have you, and then it's like, three, four weeks of school left, and then you're done, so now we've kind of reversed it, and I notice some of the other schools are doing the same thing, so, yeah, I think, Family Events.
Fun Run?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Fun Run was just on the 2nd of May, and 180 participants, second year, second annual, and it was really fun, and they had a, the Willie One Mile this year, it's an event that was very popular.
So, I want to attest that North Park, and I know Principal Duette at Highland is, concurs with what Principal Fort said, and that is, I attended the North Park Parent Night, and it was awesome, it was very well organized, and you had a big welcoming session by Principal Sasek, and then you had breakout sessions, and they had Ecuadorian dancers, and art, and all community members coming together and celebrating our kids, so I'm, I'm excited to see that same kind of at Highland and Valley View. And then reducing suspensions and referrals of students of color to reflect the general population, and actually, I would like to comment that that would be higher, that would be almost, it would be three, I'll say three plus, we're not allowed to use pluses, but almost four, except for the Academy. The, every school except for the Academy improved in their reduction of suspensions of students of color, except for the Academy actually lost ground. So, it kept the number, the exact, it came, kept the Category 2 the same that we saw last year, and we're working very hard. You've gotten a lot of information on the changes that are occurring at the Academy, and Principal Fort trying to keep the fort down in both schools this year, but we're making some changes, some good strides in that building, very happy to be working with Director Burkes on that for next year, and I'm hoping we see that needle move with the Academy, as it did the other buildings this year. License Staff Demographics as compared to Student Populations, we're about middle of the pack in our sixth area metro cohort, and then you want to talk about how families with the survey for the students and families feel welcome?
Well, I guess, Level 5 is where we want to be, and we want to stay there, and we want to be as close to 100% as possible, so I think that's good, that our families feel comfortable in, in the schools that their children attend, and we want to continue to, to improve and have all of our schools to be schools of excellence that, that we're proud of.
Thank you. And the Digital Divide, so access that kids have after school, and Director Hennigins is working on that, and we'll be measuring that next year. So, here are our levels, and I know everybody likes to see the visual, other than the matrix with all of the numbers, but there is the beautiful visual that Director Hennigins designs for all of us with the needle, it's, it's just much clearer representation of where we're at, and as you can see, we are exactly the same that we were last year as far as Strategic Direction C, but I just want to point out one area that we did move back in was Columbia Academy suspensions, but we move forward in many areas of more events and more reaching out for family engagement, getting more of our families represented in the curriculum and in our books, so I, it looks flat, and it is flat, as far as the visual, but there's so many great things going on regarding knowing who we are and, and honoring our families and our community. So, our goals are to reduce suspensions and referrals of students of color, particularly in the Academy, we are already making headway in the other buildings, and to continue to increase family involvement programs for targeted families of color, as well as all families. This just happens to be an area that we work very hard in. Any questions?
So, would you say that all the various ethnic group had, groups have the same opportunity, are being treated equally and fairly?
I would hope so, I think you'd have to ask all the groups, but as far as families I talked to, that's the goal of the district, is to serve everyone who lives in our community and who attends our school, and we, we really work hard in area family engagement, as well as all the buildings, to engage our families, involve them in the school, and hope they, from the climate survey, they're reporting that they like our schools, and if they come here, they like us, so we want to keep it up that way, over 90% say that they're very happy with our schools and, and feel comfortable in our schools.
Well, equal opportunity is so important, so thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the Vision Card for ECFE, EC, ECSE. Board will be presented with information on the Vision, Vision Card for Early Childhood Family Education, Early Childhood Special Education. Kristen Stunkel and Nicole, still in the hot seat.
At least we have somebody adept taking the screen proper.
So, it, this is the Strategic Plan for Early Childhood, Early Childhood Special Education, it's our scorecard for this current year, 2014, 2015.
So, we create worlds of opportunity for every learner, particularly our young scholars, as Director Stunkel likes to call them. So, for the core values, we really believe that every single one of them, and I'll just quickly, community excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation is so critical with our youngest scholars and their families. To set the stage for good citizenship, for innovation, for community and excellence really starts with young infants and their families, and we like to bring them in and tell them who we are and keep them.
And just a reminder that many of these programs take place here at the Family Center. We also are now embedded at all three of our elementaries with our Pre-K4 Program, and, and then also a lot of home visiting happening, both in the Early Childhood Special Education Program and also in our Early Childhood Program, so a lot of education happening in the home as well. This is a depiction of both the ECFE and Pre-K enrollment, and I want to mention, you'll see that the numbers are going down, and that's actually a good thing, and it's a good thing because we're retaining the families. We are at full capacity for our Pre-K Program, we have 120 spots in our Pre-K4 Program, and, and then we've got 36 other spots for our Pre-K3 Program, and we have seen that the families are coming into our program and staying for the whole year, as opposed to turning over. So, those higher numbers that you see in the Pre-K, that, that, and then also with the ECFE, we're, we're retaining the families, and we are really working at full capacity in all of our programs. With our Early Childhood Screening, and that takes place before children start kindergarten, we have 23% of the screenings are for three-year-olds, 38 are for five-year-olds, and 39% are for four-year-olds. Many families, we're still getting the word out, that many families think, "I'm going to hold and, and do the screening right before kindergarten starts so that they'll do really well on their test," and it's not that kind of a screening. It's really about assessing where the child is at based on their age, and then if they need any additional supports. So, it really is beneficial for families to come in when they are three, which is why that's really something that we strive towards. You're all familiar with our strategic roadmap, and, and we are working off of this on tonight's presentation. So, I'm just, 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 I'm Shall I go?
Okay, thank you.
So A1 is the Use of Articulated Standards-Based Curriculum, and we are at, at the vision level for that. All of our curriculum is aligned with the Early Childhood Indicators of Progress. We've done a lot of work with the Age 3 to Grade 3 Task Force to align curriculum instruction and assessment so that it's a seamless transition, starting right from ECFE. All of this is on Atlas, and it goes all the way, getting them right to, into kindergarten and, and forth, and so forth. So very strong curriculum. We have our professional learning communities that's meeting monthly for our Early Childhood Program. This is our second year with, that we've been focusing on equity. We use the formative data in order to differentiate, differentiate instruction. All of the children in our Early Childhood Program receive differentiated instruction, and that would be the same, of course, for ECSE. We have the, the vision level again for the Effective Teaching Strategies resulting in student engagement and the learning objectives through walkthroughs. So Nicole and I are able to, we do the walkthroughs as well as our coordinators, who work very closely with our teachers. And so we've been doing walkthroughs. This is our first year of doing walkthroughs with our program, including home visiting walkthroughs.
To try to explain to the parent, we're going to walk through and do a 30-second. We actually end up staying the whole hour and enjoy the families very much, so.
But those are, those are things where the, the teacher doesn't know necessarily that we're going to be coming and doing a walkthrough. It gives us a very brief, but I think effective snapshot of what's happening in the classroom. The appropriate use of 21st century learning, not only in terms of the use of technology, but also the collaboration, creativity, problem-solving, et cetera. We are also at vision for the, the high quality of our teaching staff. We feel very pleased with the, the quality of instruction that our teachers are providing. So on this whole page, we are at vision.
One thing I want to say, and I know I've brought this up before to the board, but for the new members and community as well, many, many, many districts are interested in what we're doing in our Early Childhood Family Ed, Special Ed. We started collaboration between Special Ed and Family Ed teachers years and years before other districts got into it. And it is really delightful for me and warms both of our hearts to go into a classroom, a Pre-K, for example, classroom, and there will be a Special Ed teacher and an ECFE Pre-K teacher, and students of all abilities, and you will not be able to tell anyone apart. Everyone is learning, and they're engaged, and the teachers are exactly on the same page, delivering the same instruction. It's really impressive, as well as there is nothing cuter, is there, than a four-year-old's running around learning. So I welcome you to stop in and visit and see the great work they're doing together.
All of our Pre-K4 classrooms, all of our Pre-K3 classrooms, and our Just For Threes, all of those classrooms are fully integrated. A quarter of the students in those classes are, are receiving Early Childhood Special Education Services. And then many of our ECs, ECFE classes are also integrated based on the parents being interested and also being involved in that class. That would also lead towards a discussion about the multi-tiered interventions, both for academics and also behavior. And, and once again, with a great teaching staff and a very appropriate curriculum, we're able to provide those multi-tiered interventions. Parent engagement is very easy with ECFE because the parents have to come, because they also receive the parent education. And then with our Pre-K program, just alone in our fall and spring parent-teacher conferences, we have all of our parents attending those. There were a couple of parents who physically couldn't come. They weren't, they could not come specifically to the classroom for that, and so we did it over the phone. But we were able to communicate with all of the parents for our parent-teacher conferences and with ECSE again. And then the last one is the participation in early childhood programs. We, we look at this in terms of the number, the percentage of resident children screened at age three. We talked about that in a previous slide. We really are trying to move towards more of our three-year-olds getting, coming in for screening. So any parents of three-year-olds out there, please come in for screening. Just a reminder of the various early childhood programs that we have. So Early Childhood Family Education, commonly known as ECFE. Our Pre-K program for threes and four-year-olds. Home visits, as we mentioned earlier. Early childhood screening, we continue with the Super Second Saturdays. Those have concluded now for the year, and they'll start up again in October. Our Family Center Presents, which is on Thursday evenings, and those cover a variety of topics. Early Childhood Special Education Programs, Early Literacy Training for Parents, and that's through the Early Childhood Special Ed Program. We were renewed for our four-star Parent Aware Rating, and that's for all of our Pre-K programs and also our Mini Adventures Programs. Having the four-star Parent Aware Rated Programs enables parents, through the Pathways 1 Scholarships and our district through Pathways 2, to be able to access our programs. And it's a recognition of the high quality of not only instruction but curriculum. The goal that we've really been focusing on this year is that alignment of our Pre-K4 curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And we've focused specifically on the assessment, meeting with a group of kindergarten teachers from all of the schools and our whole Pre-K3 and 4 team, so that we, we looked at what are the assessments that they do in kindergarten so that we make sure that our assessment in Pre-K is directly leading towards that preparation for kindergarten. We've, we've done all of that revision for the literacy section, bless you. And that's aligned with the revision that MDE did for the Early Childhood Indicators of Progress. We're still waiting on the math revision, at which point then we will revise that section of our assessments as well. And I guess that's it. One, one thing that I would like to mention is that we're very excited because next year, we're going to have Reading Core members. We'll have three Reading Core members working with our Pre-K program, and then a Reading Core member splitting their time between our two Mini Adventures Programs. So that's an exciting new development for our Early Childhood Program, too. Thank you.
Are you able to, you know, I, I go to conferences and they say the, it's so important for parents to read to their children, especially at that age, and especially fathers. Are you able to help parents with those strategies and, you know, to emphasize that at all?
Yes, we have, we've done some special programming around, around literacy. We, with the grant that we received from the Anoka County Child and Family Council, we've been actually giving families in our ECFE for EL program books on a regular basis. And then Chris Buze, Dr. Chris Buze, who is our parent educator, has also done a lot of programming specifically around the role of fathers, too, including about literacy. So yes.
Great.
I guess I have a question here. We're at capacity right now for all of these programs. Are we turning a lot of students away?
So in terms of, we, we do maintain a waiting list. We always offer then openings that happen in our ECFE program, which are mixed age. And we do have a ratio of how many adults to children, and so we have to work within that. We do also refer families to the Head Start Program. And then also, we, we work closely with the daycare providers in our area as well. Sometimes there's a referral for that as well. And Karen Kramer, who's the manager of our Early Childhood Programs, and Dr. Buze are actually doing a training also with the childcare providers this month. I forgot to mention that. So we do refer out to these other things. We also mention about the Super Saturdays and the Family Center Presents. We do home visits if it doesn't work for a family to be enrolled in a class. So we have other offerings that we do as well until we can get them into a class.
Okay, thank you.
And regarding students who are Special Ed, there is, there is no closed door.
Right, I understand that.
I just wanted, for the community.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just, I'm just seeing that, you know, that we're, we're all full up, and I'm wondering if there, if there are students who are not able to serve. I mean, sometimes there's just no space. I, I understand that. But I, I just wanted to know if that was a significant issue or just a, in-
At this point, it's not significant because we've grown our program each year, and we've grown our program strategically based on where the waiting list was the previous year. So we really do, every year, adjust the programming to meet the needs of the community.
Thank you.
I guess I'm curious, too. Have you seen this carryover into kindergarten? Are the students better prepared when they hit kindergarten now?
Yes, and that's something that we heard consistently in the, in that task force with the kindergarten teachers, that they can definitely tell the, the students that were involved with ECSE and Early Childhood Family Education Pre-K, also students that have been able to attend the Bridges to Kindergarten Program, which we will be running again, starting at the end of July. So definitely, we've, we've heard that consistently from the teachers. In, in fact, they kind of spread them out. They say each, each classroom gets a couple of them because they find that they're also good role models for the other students.
One as a parent, you know, going through ECFE and both ECSE, too, with both my kids, I'm friends with a lot of those parents that we, I'm still friends with, you know, from meeting them. You know, and I never met them before, before I went into ECFE and meeting them. So I want to commend you. I mean, it does build relationships, you know, and community involvement, and that's something that I think is very important in a child's education. So, thank you. I appreciate everything you're doing, Kristen.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you as well, and I'm personally really excited to hear about the home visits. So I'm anxious to hear more about how that's impacting the future of kindergarteners, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is our Solar Garden update. Be presented with an update on the solar garden, and it's going to be Bill.
Okay, good evening. School Board members, Superintendent Kathy Kelly. I want to just give you an update on some projects that we've been working on. We're looking, if you remember, a year ago, we put a, a solar array on, on Columbia Academy, and we're starting to save some dollars there with generating electricity on our roofs. The solar garden is really a little different concept. And actually, I'm getting ahead of myself because I forgot to go through our, our mission statement, which you've already saw this evening, but we really are here to create a world of opportunity for every learner. And when we look at our core values and this project, we're really looking at community, we're looking at collaboration, and of course, we're certainly looking at innovation as a new way to pay for electricity costs in our buildings. There's a new program. This doesn't even, we don't have to do anything. That's, that's the beauty of this program. It, it isn't putting any more solar arrays on our buildings. It's actually a solar, there's 600 solar gardens or arrays that are put out during, in, throughout Minnesota. And we just agreed to buy electricity from them. And it's a, it's a program from the state of Minnesota, whereas the rate that we pay for the electricity generated from a solar garden is less than the electricity rates coming out of our regular utility companies. And because of the usage or the volume of electricity that we purchased, we're able to participate in, in this program. So over the years, this is a 25-year project. That's just the age that they put on these solar arrays. We'll know more when we get some more age in some of these solar arrays, whether they'll last longer than that or if they'll have to be replaced. But the considerable, it's a considerable savings for us. Of course, those always start out real, real high, like where we are with the one that's on our, on our Columbia Academy roof, on top of our gym. So you can see, for the first year, our, the electricity rate that we're paying right now is 11.46 cents per kilowatt hour, where we only have to pay 10.99 cents out of the solar garden. So it's a savings of $16,000 in the first year, which was, which is not considerable, but it is a savings, and we don't have to do anything except to sign up and buy the power. So there is, in the handout that I put into your board packet, the very last page, you can see a lot more detail here, but I just tried to get a picture here so you can see what's, what would happen with our savings. But by year five, we're looking at a $61,000 savings on a yearly basis. And then year 10, 10, 15, we're at $187,000. You can see, we get out to year 25, we're looking at $340,000 on a yearly basis. And that's just some considerable dollars that we can save, that we can put into different, different areas in our school district going forward. So that's just a very short update, and really, we're looking at the savings. And again, this, this is not solar arrays that are on our buildings, or on our property. This is just us being able to participate in this government program where our rate, what we pay, gets locked in. And of course, the, the rates that you're seeing on the electricity rate, I mean, that's, that's, that's based on what electricity's done in the last few years, so this, you know, it's not a guarantee, but certainly very feasible what will happen. So you can see, over a 25-year period, we can look at saving around $4 million. So it's very, very exciting on my part, and especially when Tom and I are trying to find ways to work on the buildings and fix the buildings, this is very exciting. Is, any questions?
I would just say, as a community member, it's exciting to, to me as well, the ability to save, it's great. So we do have an array on Columbia Academy?
Yes. A year ago, we put an array on, on Columbia Academy. That one works a little different, where we actually are using the power that we're generating, and then we get a, and anything that we, anything that we generate that we don't need gets put back on the grid, and we're selling that power. But it takes about 10 years to pay for the, pay for the array. So the first 10 years, we're only saving about $1,500 on a yearly basis. But after that 10th year, then we start to see some $20,000, $25,000 on a yearly basis that we'll be saving on that array. So that's a few years out, but we're certainly getting it paid for at this time. And I guess just to note, also, when that array went in, we didn't pay a dime to put it in either. So it's a very good program for us. We receive the savings, but we didn't have to put any dollars out to pay for it. Okay?
Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Bill. Next up, the transportation contract, and you're up again.
Yep. Just quickly, I want to talk about our transportation contract. I guess I want you to try to think back, well, three years. I know that not all of you were on the board three years ago, but we were having considerable problems, issues with our transportation. We were having daily problems. It wasn't just something that happened once a month. It was daily. We went out for bid. We hired a new company. They came in and gave us very good rates, and they are doing a phenomenal job with the transportation of our students. Of course, now, this is our second year, and the way that the government contracts work for these transportation companies is we can, we can solidify a two-year contract with them, but we also can extend it two more years without having to go through the whole bidding process. So at this point, we would, we would recommend that we would continue with the bus company we have for two more years. At that point, we do have to go out for a bid. We did negotiate some rates at the beginning, so we know what the rates would be. And what it is, it's a one and a half percent increase, up to 2% depending on what we actually get from the state of Minnesota. So if we would get, you know, one and a half percent, they get one and a half percent. Two, they get two. But if it goes over two, well, I don't think we're going to get more than 2%. We've talked about that all spring. But they would not. They're locked in at two. So next meeting, I'd like to bring, you know, updated contract for the Rens Bus Company. They've just really done a very good job for us.
The rate's one and a half if we get 1% as well, right? That's, that's their fixed low side.
Yeah, but I guess I should back up. The year that we're in, too, though, we only paid 1% this past year. It was only a 1% increase, and we actually got two from the state of Minnesota. So we are ahead of the game on the increases going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know if this is, is still any, you know, close to being competitive to what other bus companies are charging?
Yes, but when we go out and look at the rates, other bus companies are getting, it's always very interesting when you hear a neighboring school district out for bids. Actually, we are on the low side of our, our daily rates with these buses. Of course, we don't have a, it's quite a few miles- Of course, we don't have a, it's quite a few miles sometimes to run at some other school districts, but we do run, you know, we have, I think we're 29 buses, so we are moving a lot of kids on a daily basis. And I guess I'm very pleased with the rates we have, because I've seen a lot worse.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think when they came in with this bid, it was significantly lower than what some of the other bids were.
Yeah, the original startup with them two years ago was actually less than the company we were actually having issues with. So, that was very good news too, at the time.
And they're more efficient too.
Yes, and they're, they're very responsive. If we have something we want done different, it's, it's immediate, it's not something we have to wait for.
I had to, as a parent, I noticed that, you know, instantly, you know, they, I call them, they're boom, run the bus, not even, they, they can contact the bus like instantly and find out situations.
Yeah, and actually, I mean, I communicate with the owner of the company on a regular basis, and he always says, you know, if there's an issue, call me, because he wants it fixed immediately, he does not want any issues.
Sounds like a good business.
Yeah.
And this is coming to us at the next board meeting?
At the next meeting, we'll have a resolution to extend their contract.
Okay. Any other questions at this point?
It sounds like you have a lot less complaints than before.
I'm, actually, right now, I'm not getting any complaints, and that's, that's kind of, yeah. And, and that's really, for me, that's really, you can really gauge at what's going on. If I'm hearing issues, I'm hearing complaints, it's bad.
No duplicate cards.
It usually goes to a few levels before I hear it.
The only way to pack a board meeting is have a problem with the bussing.
Get duplicate cards printed?
Oh, the buses are beautiful too.
Yeah, they are.
I mean, they're, they're only two years old.
Yeah, that was a nice thing, I mean, they didn't come in and buy a bunch of used buses. We actually got all brand-new buses the first year they're here. And as we've had to add a couple buses, and they've gone out and bought new ones too. So, it's, it's been a very nice relationship with them.
I like that our names are on it too.
Yeah, well, that, that, I put that on the contract, it told me how to do that.
Any other questions for Bill? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next is Community Education Adventure Club, Mini Adventure Club fees. Kristen and Bill are here to talk about the fee schedule.
Good evening again, Board Chair Larkin, Members of the School Board Superintendent Kelly. This evening, we come to you to, to present as an information item, what will be then brought forward in two weeks as an action item, which is the need for our Adventure Club and Mini Adventures program to increase fees by 5% to account for increased costs. Everything that we do is based on our mission statement and our core values, and certainly with, with our early child, with our Adventure Club and Mini Adventures program, the excellent programming that we provide, the integrity in terms of the financial accountability that we have, and the integrity of the programming that we provide to the students, respect, and innovation also, and I'll talk a little bit more about the innovation that we're doing with our programs towards the end. The Mini Adventures preschool program that takes place here in our family center, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, you'll see that the fees are based on the number of days per week that families participate. I have in one column, this current year's fees that go through the end of June, and then the proposed fees, which is, which reflects a 5% increase for the 2015-2016 year, starting July 1st. So, you can see that it's, it's an increase of 5%, and the, the amount is very similar to the increase that we did last year, which was also a 5%. I, I met with, with Director Holmgren about what our costs are, both in terms of staffing costs, benefits, and also supplies, and we felt that the 5% would then cover our cost. I'll just remind the board that for our childcare programs, we are not allowed to use any of the, the money that we receive through levies or through the state, it has to be a self-sustaining fee-based program. So, the, the cost of the fees has to cover the cost of the program, and this 5% reflects that. And then for our Adventure Club program, and that's the after-school program, it, it provides an opportunity for families to consistently have their children in the childcare program, starting from about 2:15 to 20, when school ends, until 6:00 PM. And then on non-school days, that's a 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM program, same with on the summer, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So, that's also a 5% increase. The fees include all the meals, so the breakfast and lunch for our, for the students when they're there during those hours, field trips, curriculum and programming supervised by manager Jody Gadian, who has a teaching license. Our Mini Adventures program, as I mentioned, is that four-star parent-aware rated, and then activities, including games, arts, literacy, guided circle time, outdoor time, and special events. And a couple exciting things that are happening this summer with our Adventure Club program, for example, are that we are participating now for a second year in a row with the Summer Reads program. So, we'll have a Summer Reads, two Summer Reads staff with our Adventure Club program for half-days during the summer. We also have the, the full programming with our agriculture specialist Bonnie Loman in Blooming Heights. And then, in addition to that, now, we are going to be collaborating with SNAP Ed to provide some nutrition programming for our Adventure Club program that will be tied into the garden as well. And then, the arts organization Abricot Doodle, they, they said that they really wanted to, they love our district, and they just wanted to come and offer for no charge some in-house field trips around arts programming. So, it's a very enriched opportunity. In addition to that, we're still doing the field trips and the theme for the summer, so that just gives you a sense of, of some of the offerings for, for our families. We do have fee assistance available for eligible families through the Pathways One scholarships, and that's for the Early Childhood Program, and then also for, through the counties, through Anoka Ramsey and Hennepin County for the Childcare Assistance Program. Are there any questions?
The Mini Adventure program, that's, I mean, that, that's a childcare program, correct? With curriculum built into it?
Yes, both are.
Right, but I mean, that's, and maybe this is a horrible analogy, but that's similar to like daycare or childcare, I mean, the 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Yes.
If I were to bring a child in, that, once a week, that $49 covers that entire day, correct?
So, for the, which was?
I was just using the one.
So, for the Mini Adventures program, yes, $49 for one day a week, the, the child could, in theory, come in at 6:00 AM until 6:00 PM.
That was my question.
And, and then within that, yes, there, there is a schedule, a routine, and, and there's curriculum that's used, and, and they have a variety of different experiences. We, we have some children that, where the parents choose to also have them enrolled in our pre-K program, so then the child is walked over to the pre-K program. The pre-K teachers really, when they saw what was happening in, in Mini Adventures, said, this is a great preschool program, which is why after our first year, we inserted the word preschool into the title of the program, because our licensed pre-K teachers were saying, this is a terrific program that has, you know, the curriculum and instruction built right into it. And that's also reflected in that four-star parent-aware rating.
Right, and I guess my point is, wanted to clarify first, is that, that's actually still pretty reasonable for someone to, to have that, not just to have childcare period, but a educational-based childcare for five days a week for maybe four bucks an hour, if they were coming 10 hours a day. I mean, if I did my math right, and if I did it wrong, Bill, I'm sorry, but it's, that's just, in general, I guess my comment is, is that, yes, it's an increase, but yet, it still seems like it's a pretty, pretty good deal for the cost that's involved as far as what the program is offering, so.
We really believe so, yes, thank you.
Questions, comments? And this is coming back in next meeting as well?
At the next meeting, it will be brought as an action item, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and next up is board policies. That's our first reading on these. Let's get to that. Lots of stuff tonight. All right, the board policies for the first reading tonight is 501 school weapons, 502 search of student lockers, desks, personal possessions, and student persons, 503 student attendance, 506 student discipline, 506 form, 514 bullying prohibition, 524 internet acceptable use and safety, 526 hazing, 603 curriculum development, 604 instructional curriculum, 613 graduation requirements. These policies will appear on a future agenda for approval. Questions or comments?
Are these changes statutory? You know, or?
The majority of them, and Molly and Grant, you guys were in that one too, the last one we did the.
Majority of them were MSBA or statute-based.
Pretty much were MSB, statute-based. I mean, the bullying one, I think I gave you the example of earlier, is, is MSBA has come out and has, has hit it harder this year, more clarification with that one. That's the one that I remember, we probably had the most significant changes that were statute-based moving forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Questions? We will move on to our action items, and the first one up is board policies, it's a second reading. If I could, I'd be looking for a motion to move that forward, to go over those.
I'll move that forward.
Motion by Molly, second by Ted. The second reading for these and the board policies is 406 public and private personnel data, 410 family and medical leave policy, 413 harassment and violence, 419 tobacco-free environment, 421 gifts to employees, 415 staff development. These policies appeared on the April 28 meeting for our first reading approval, we saw it tonight's meeting. Any discussion on these?
I guess again, I, I understand that these are statutory changes.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And have we received any comments from anybody on these?
Not through the superintendent's office.
Shake on their head, no back there as well. Okay. Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the external user access recertification LEA approval, and that's going to be Director Holmgren.
Chair Larkin, and Members of the School Board, Superintendent Kathy Kelly. We talked last, our last meeting, talking about the, this new system that MDA has put together, our external user, and what do we mean by external users, is us, as a school district, we're external to MDE, so to use their systems, we have to permission to do that. And I'm here to ask tonight that we would designate Superintendent Kelly to be our designate to look over that system.
Okay, could I get a motion to move that forward, please?
I'll move.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Oh, kind of seconds. Give that one to, give that one to Lori. Discussion or questions?
So, this would just allow Superintendent Kelly to authorize who could use the system? Is that correct?
Right, she, she would allow any of the directors or any other employee that we need to access a MDE system, she would allow access for us to do that, and she would be in control, saying yes or no. It gets looked at once a year, so anybody that maybe we've changed their mind if they should have access or not, would be taken off, but it would go through one person at the, at the district. Where now, it's a whole bunch of little systems, and we have to keep track of a lot of things, but here, it's all in one place, we can see everybody, every system, and who has access.
That seems appropriate.
It seems this is more efficient, it's electronic, versus it looks like a form that used to be have to be sent in.
Yeah, we're not having to send in paper forms and fax them in, or scan them in and send them in, and, yes, it'd be much more efficient than it has been in the past.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up will be Action Item C, discontinuance or reduction of programs and positions for The board will be asked to approve a resolution for discontinuation or reduction of programs and positions for 2015-2016. Director Bennett, Director Holmgren.
Chair Larkin, Members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly. Back in January, the board did adopt a resolution which started the staffing process, it directed administration to look for efficiencies and economies, and we have met as an administrative team through January meetings, February meetings, March meetings, April meetings, and even some into May. So, we spent many hours in the superintendent conference room, really looking at staffing and where we can make any changes, cuts, et cetera. So, tonight, we are here with a resolution for the discontinuance or reductions of programs and positions for 2015-2016. A draft of this resolution was brought forward at the last board meeting, and then a copy was in the update from last week from the superintendent's office.
Okay, thank you. I'll be looking for a motion to move this forward, and then I'll read the resolution.
So, move.
Member Landwear?
Second.
Second by Member Nichols. Resolution discontinuing and reducing educational programs and positions due to enrollment and department efficiencies. Whereas the School Board of Independent School District Number 13 adopted a resolution on January 27, 2015, directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions, and whereas said recommendations have been received and considered by the School Board. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13 as follows. The following programs and positions or portions thereof be discontinued due to enrollment, program elimination, curricular changes, and departmental efficiencies. 7.95 FTE licensed and non-licensed elementary positions, 6.77 FTE licensed and non-licensed achieved positions, 0.00 FTE licensed and non-licensed Columbia Academy positions, 2.3625 FTE licensed and non-licensed Columbia Heights High School positions, 1.0 FTE non-licensed finance and operation department positions, 1.0 FTE licensed teaching and learning department positions, .025 FTE licensed study services department positions, .40 FTE non-licensed community education department positions, all teacher positions with licensure variances by law need to renew, all teacher positions that were one-year contract, long-term substitution positions, and all positions cut for performance. Any discussion?
I just have one question in light of the parent comment that we had at the beginning of the meeting. I know this, these staffing decisions affect the programs throughout the district, are the students at Valley View still going to be able to get adequate activity, get in light of this, these staffing decisions?
I would like to respond to that. I think that Principal Ford had sent an email responding to parents, and I think that we do have adequate activities for students, and I think that I would like to remind the board that not only do we have morning recess and lunch recess, but I think it was two years ago that we added an additional 15 minutes to resets so that the kids could eat and then go out and do some more. And Valley View has a program where they have jamming minutes embedded within the classrooms themselves, and so I think there is going to be a more directed effort from the standpoint of staff to do more of that. I also would like to remind the board that the PE, the PE time that was designated for Valley View has only been at, has only been at two positions for the last two to three years. Before that, there was a different emphasis on the specialities that were emphasized. And so, I think overall, we will work toward additional exercise and activities for the kids, and I think we feel, and I think Principal Ford is here tonight, and Director Burke is to assure us that this will be the work of the future as well as what we're doing in the present.
Okay.
But right now, you feel there will be adequate activity for the students?
Yes, I do. And so does Principal Ford and Director Burkus.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Lori, if you would do a roll call, please?
Sure. Larkin?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Landwear?
Aye.
Next.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. The next step of the staffing process is a resolution that was in the packet, and this is to terminate non-renew probationary teacher contracts. And by law, we need to do this. This does include some staff that there is not a specific position available for them, staff that might have been on a one-year, long-term subcontract that we do have to non-renew by law. If any staff was on a variance, and it also includes any staff that we did have performance concerns and are going to non-renew them. So tonight, we're here seeking approval.
You looking for a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Seconded by Laura. Read the resolution. Resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contracts of probationary teachers. Whereas the following persons are probationary teachers in Independent School District Number 13, as listed below. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 13 that pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A.40 subdivision 5, the teaching contracts of those persons listed on page 2 of this resolution, probationary teachers of Independent School District Number 13 are hereby terminated and not renewed at the close of the current 2014, 2015 school year. Be it further resolved, that written notice be sent to said teachers regarding termination and non-renewal of his or her contract as provided by law, and that said notice shall be in substantially the following form, as listed below. Discussion?
I guess just to point out that for the public, the teachers can be rehired if we see the need to do that as a district, so that's always an option. And these votes are hard, just want to point that out. It's always hard to vote because we know we're affecting people's lives.
Yes, I'll take this opportunity to concur with Member Landwear that, number one, that I have 100% confidence in staff, that they've looked at everything, and that the decisions are not made lightly regarding the first resolution, this one, and the following one. And that, you know, whether it be, is there going to be enough exercise at Valley View in the future, whatever, I'm confident that these are all things that are looked at and are, you know, you'll be moving forward. And Member Landwear was correct. It's never easy to sit down and deal with the things that we're dealing with tonight, but they're decisions that have to be made. So I appreciate the effort that you guys have put into this to provide us with, at this time, what is the best-case scenario based on, you know, the financial situations that we're dealing with, so.
It looks like a lot of the, a lot of the staffing decisions here were basically based upon projections of enrollment. It seems pretty, pretty minimal. You know, you get good and strong enrollment kids, they, you know, you don't know that they're coming yet, but whenever they sign up, you very well could have to fill a lot of these positions, especially in the earlier grades.
It's always easier to add on than cut later on.
Well, it's almost impossible to cut later on, so. And you need to do this also for the courtesy of the teacher so that they have an opportunity to explore other options as well. So the more time that they have, you know, that they can make other decisions, and hopefully we can get them back in the fall. Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, I got Lori, roll call, please.
Palmer?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
And one more time.
And the final resolution tonight that we're bringing forward, this is the termination, elimination, reduction of programs and positions. So this would be the non-affiliated, non-probationary teacher positions that we are going to cut and then terminate certain people that are tied to those positions. So tonight, we're just here seeking approval of this resolution.
Again, I'd be looking for a motion to move this forward. Motion by Member Landwear.
Second.
Member Palmer. Resolution relating to the termination, elimination, and reduction of positions and programs. Whereas the following are positions or employees in Independent School District 13, licensed, non-affiliated, as listed below. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 13 that those persons or positions listed above in the Independent School District Number 13 are hereby terminated, eliminated, or reduced at the close of the current 2014, 2015 school or on the date otherwise noticed. Be it further resolved, that written notice be sent to the said employees regarding termination, elimination, or reduction. Any discussion?
I just want to point out as well that my appreciation for all the work in identifying how to be more effective in delivering education in the district. So I understand that that's the basis for these decisions, and I appreciate that.
Anybody else?
These people can move in the district, too, or is it just terminating positions?
This, I can reread the first part of the resolution, but it's relating to termination, elimination, and reduction of positions.
Okay, so just, okay.
Any other questions, comments? Lori, roll call, please.
Nichols?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Landwear?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, under board topics, is a listening session update. I don't have who's going to do it, so.
Yes.
Nicole?
Thank you, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I was fortunate enough to be invited to two listening sessions in a row the last two times. The first time I was with Director Stunkel, and the last time I was by myself with other administrative support and board members. The first session with Director Stunkel, we had some parents come and share their concerns about family engagement, about being inclusive in the school, having calendar printed in Spanish, and getting, making sure that families feel included and involved. They had some good ideas that we're working on. I worked with Director Burkus and Jane Reardon, who is the EL, English Language Learner and Family Engagement Coordinator. We're working on some of the things, communicating with the PTOs. We're going to be setting up meetings with the PTOs in all the buildings and showing them what we're doing in the area of family engagement. Because just like in a district, if you're in one building or you have a child in one building but not the others, you might not know everything that's going on in the area of family engagement. So we're pleased to be able to do that. Then the second session, we had a mother come who had some concerns about how that her children, her daughters, were being communicated with at the high school around PSEO, post-secondary education options, for those who don't know the acronym. And also making sure that they're getting the proper guidance in the area of Career and College Ready. And I'm very proud to say that Principal Wobleski and I worked with Director Burkus and Superintendent Kelly. And we came up with a very comprehensive plan to kind of enhance already some of the things we were doing. There were things they're doing with Career and College Ready that I was not even aware of. And Molly Sprouse, who is dean, who is the academic dean, is going to be strengthening her relationship with individual students who are in PSEO, who are in AP classes, pre-AP classes, also down at the academy next year. She'll be working with the students to, with the eighth graders, to make sure that the students and their families are on track to where they want to go once they get into high school. So advisories now are going to be doing some more. They're already doing ramp-up with their students, but they're going to be going through some checklists. We're going to be utilizing the wonderful pathways that have been designed. And Director Mahone has been working on the elementary one, I think, too, with pathways, so that we can have conversations with families using what we've developed and using what we know about 21st century skills in Career and College Ready, but communicating that out to the families more so that we understand, so that they understand what we're doing, and we understand what their needs are for their kids. So the listening sessions, for me, doing double duty, I don't know if I'm up for number three, but I don't think I am, have been really a wonderful experience. And starting conversations so that we can, A, explain to families some of the things we're already doing, and then, B, take their suggestions and go back to the appropriate people and say, hey, this is what this parent said, and what do you think about trying this? So that's about all I have to report. I hope I didn't miss anything.
Just to build on that, we know we mentioned it previously, but our next listening session is May 19th, if you're available, Nicole. And...
I might just come and listen.
Just a comment on listening sessions in general. I know when we first decided to do this, this was a discussion that we had. You know, we weren't having people come and talk to us. And they're not knocking down the doors, and we're not having to grab extra chairs, but hopefully the word is getting out there that it's okay to come in, and it's a pleasant, positive environment to start with, and that there's positive experience that follows up, and that hopefully that this is something that if we continue to do it, that it becomes, as you said, it continues to be beneficial for the parents as well as for the district, so.
We don't bite.
Pardon?
We don't bite.
No, it's been a wonderful experience, so I welcome people to come. Thank you.
And thank you to everyone that's come in so far.
Who's coming to the next, who's the next session?
Why, funny you should ask. I happen to have that list right here. If you're looking for particular board members to come and visit on the May 19th at 5:30, it's Member Lewis and Member Landwear. And I don't know who the lucky duck for administration is going to be yet, so.
Discuss that tomorrow.
Oh, you know what? I actually see something there. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know who the lucky duck is. Director Burkus will be there, so. Or is scheduled to be there.
We're not doing this alphabetically in case somebody's wondering.
It's not alphabetical. Anything else on the board topic of listening sessions? Any other board topics?
I do have one, I do have one concern. I saw in the update that our personality session with Dennis Cheeseborough, you know, is ninety dollars a person. And, you know, given that there are other options out there to do a personality test that don't cost that amount of money, I guess I'd like to take another look at that. You know, the more, the less we spend, the more it goes into the general fund from the board budget. Then I think we can accomplish finding out what our personalities are without having to spend that money. So I'd like to take another look at it.
I would just like to say that we've signed a contract, and he is scheduled, and that does include the book and the access to the survey and the facilitation of the workshop. So if you look at that, it's comparable to any other workshop. It's within the price range of doing something for board development or teacher development, for that matter.
So we're bound to it right now?
Yeah, we're committed.
Yeah, but it's for, it's for, it's for everything. It's the whole package, not just the survey. The survey is kind of the...
And thinker.
Yeah, it's the, it's the, I still want to find out what...
I think there's, we have expectations of our staff for professional development, and I think that there's probably expectations that as board members that, you know, we, you know, take an opportunity to do that as well. And I know we're going to be doing, or looking at something in addition to that, but I guess I'm, I'm comfortable, it's budgeted for, if I understand, out of our budget, correct? Okay, so for the school boards. I mean, it's not something that we're taking away from someplace else to do this. I guess I'm, personally, I'm comfortable with following through. That sounds like we probably have to anyway, but...
Yeah, if we're already bound, then obviously there's no sense in rediscussing it.
Plus, you'll get the book, and you might want to use that with some of your family members later.
Depends if it's good or not.
Any other board topics?
I would just like to say something. Being at the retirees banquet, you know, it kind of brought me back a little bit about how much this community is family. And, you know, seeing the people come up and talk today. And it was a really hard board session tonight, you know. And, but we're still, you know, this community is still a family, you know, and everybody's important, so just wanted to state that.
Anybody else?
I think we got a whole bunch of events coming up, don't we?
Well, you know what, that's actually...
Yeah. Check the calendars or something every night. Oh, my gosh, yes. Definitely go online and check the calendar. I think every school's having their band concerts, right? Isn't that coming up next week?
The high school band concert was last night.
Oh, last night, okay.
And it was excellent, by the way.
Yeah, I had to work last night, so I wasn't...
Great place.
Yeah. There's choir concert, band concerts. The middle school has a band concert on Thursday. It's crazy busy with lots of really good opportunities, so.
And Silverwood, that'll be coming up, too, correct?
Yep.
That's a two-day or three-day event?
Two.
Two days, yeah. Elementary one night and secondary the next. Yeah, and that, and if you haven't gone to that, it is, it is really fun. It is a beautiful place to get together and see all of the artwork, and it's just a beautiful park. And then the bands and the singing and the little vignettes of dancers and actors. And it's just, it really is a good time. And the weather so far, the last couple of years, has been actually pretty awesome, too. So we'll keep our fingers crossed on that. Definitely go out there and take a look at that one. Check our calendars.
Looking forward to tomorrow with the scholarship.
Academic?
Academic scholarships, that's pretty cool.
Yeah, I do want to make one comment, too, about school buses. I learned at the National School Board Association Conference is that school buses are the best and safest way of getting students to school. So having a stellar school bus system is important not only for the district, but the safety of students as well.
Agreed.
Anything else? If not, we'll adjourn the meeting at 8:35. Thanks, everybody.